Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this Virginia City Council Chambers and the City Council Meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. The time is 5:30 PM. We have a full quorum here today. Thank you for everybody who's in the audience has come to watch the council meeting, those who are going to speak before us today, and welcome to those of you who are listening in the audience and watching it on cable access network. We have a full agenda for today, so we'll try to get through it as efficiently and effectively as we possibly can. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Motley.
Here.
Friedleeb.
Present.
Paulson.
Present.
Beyondich.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Aaron Sally.
Here.
Cuffey.
President, would everyone please stand and join me in the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll move to item 3.1 on the agenda, which is a proclamation. This proclamation is for National Police Week, and I would like to read this to the audience and those who are listening at home. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed the first proclamation recognizing May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and week in which falls on National Police Week. And whereas police officers throughout the state work tirelessly to protect and serve all citizens, enforce our laws, and keep our neighborhoods, schools, and families safe. Whereas police officers report for duty aware of the sacrifices they may be called upon to make and risk their lives each and every day in order to safeguard the public and enforce the laws of the state of Minnesota. And whereas we reflect upon the selfless dedication and bravery of our local, state, and other public sector police as our safety and well-being is promoted by the devotion to maintaining peace and security in our communities. Whereas National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, our opportunities to honor officers have fallen in the line of duty and recognize the sacrifices made by families of those officers and the families of those who continue to protect and serve our communities. Now therefore, be resolved, I Larry Cuffey Jr., the Mayor of the City of Virginia, and the City Council of the City of Virginia, and all citizens of the City of Virginia, recognize hereby Sunday, May 12th, 2024, through Saturday, May 18th, 2024, as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2024, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in the City of Virginia, and we call upon these observances to the attention of all. Thank you. And just to let you know, every year during Police Week, police officers from all across the state of Minnesota celebrate and recognize those who have fallen in the line of duty. This happens all over the United States, no different here in the state of Minnesota, where officers will come from all corners of the state of Minnesota to stand by the Police Officers Memorial down at the Capitol for on May 15th and stand guard and duty in recognition and honor of those who lost their lives in the line of duty. So, thank you. Move to item four on the agenda, the public forum. This is an opportunity for the citizens to come forward and speak at the council meeting. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to come forward and speak today? Please step forward. Please turn the light to green. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor.
And welcome to the city council meeting.
Mayor Greg Lancy. It's all good tonight. All good news tonight. No problems. I'm taking Councilor Johnson's advice to come forward to talk about cost-saving measures and also generating income for the city. One thing I'd like to do first, at the top of the agenda, it says, "Any citizen or counselor can ask for a specific item on the agenda to be addressed separately." So officially, I'd like to do that, and the item is "I," and it's the $20,064,000 Ford Transit van. So I'd like to address that first. The van is a luxury item for Park and Rec Department, and I understand that it's already on the bond as an item. So, the problem I'm having with that is that I don't think the bidding process was done that should be fair to the guy who has his name on the convention center. So Iron Trail Motors, whether you know it or not, Brad Skida owns four dealerships, three of them in Minnesota and one in Wisconsin. So I'm speaking on his behalf tonight and mine because I've had a conversation through a third party, and I can confidently express his concerns about this. So his words were that he's not concerned that he needs to have absolute bidding part of this, but he wants everyone available, all dealers in our area to have a competitive bid process, him included. So, I think that we owe him that consideration for sure. His name's on the building. Our Park and Rec Department is office out of the building that he paid a million dollars to have his Iron Trail Motors on the side of that building. So he's not trying to fall. I'm standing up on his behalf saying he deserves a chance to bid this, and I think having four dealerships that I know of, he would be very competitive in putting a price out on that Ford van. So also, the other issue I have with it is the optics at this time. So it's not necessarily the amount of money that the van, or it's not the van itself. It is the money. It's the money that the city's greenlighting to spend, and at the same time, we're asking union employees to take concessions. We're asking homeowners and citizens to pay huge sums in their property taxes. So my point is, it's just the optics alone are not good. And whether that, you know, anybody can justify buying it and spending the money, that's the easy thing. You know, that's not a problem. Just go ahead and spend the money. So the money's not going to go anywhere. It's already dedicated in a fund. So if that money sits there, it's going to generate income. It won't go anywhere. It can be used for something else. Another piece of equipment. It's in the equipment fund. We borrowed the money. It's in the bank.
It cannot be used for anything that was not listed in the public hearing and the public notice.
So we have another public hearing and do it again in a year?
We cannot. We have to either use it for that fund, what we listed on that list, or we have to use it to reduce the debt over the next, how many years? We can't pay off the bond early.
So it could be used to reduce the debt?
Correct.
So that would be a bad thing?
No, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. That's just the two options we have. We can't use anything else. We can't just store it. We can't pay interest on it. We can't...
I think the whole point, and everybody that's come through this door in the last nine months, is try to help you reduce the debt. I mean, so it's not going to waste. It's not going to disappear. To me, it's a nonessential item that could be certainly looked at a year from now. So, Counselor Johnson, you asked and invited citizens to come forward with their ideas and recommendations. I commend you for that. You were exactly right. I agree with you 100%. Citizens should be coming through this door with their ideas and their thoughts about how to save money and generate money, and I'm going to do both of that tonight. So the other two saving measures are the two people, the two positions that are vacated, they are advertised to be filled. So one of them is accountant clerk for Sherry, and the other's a mechanic. So I'm going to speak on behalf of the mechanics at our city garage. I have full confidence that whether they have that mechanic or not, if an ambulance or a fire truck or a police car, essential items, comes into that garage, it's going to get taken care of. There's no doubt in my mind that they're capable enough to fix that ambulance in a timely manner. If it doesn't get fixed, I guarantee you, it's not because those guys couldn't do it. It's because they couldn't get the parts. That'd be the only reason. So I'm confident that they can deal with not having a mechanic for maybe a year, and we'll relook at it again when our finances are better. And Sherry's behalf, if she needs an accountant clerk, I would say, rather than hire a full-time employee, so we have the pension, the benefits, the salary, which is probably $100,000 per employee average, $80,000 to $100,000, she can, at her discretion, get an accounting clerk from a firm to come in on a part-time basis, as she needs, to help her do whatever bookkeeping we're looking at by hiring a full-time person. So, those three items, $64,000 for the van, $200,000 for the two employees, could be agreed upon right now, tonight, $264,000, just like that. No problem. Nobody's feelings are getting hurt. You're not laying off an employee. Nobody goes home, which is simply don't fill a vacant spot. Attrition. Any business in this entire world that's genuinely trying to serve, save money, the first thing they do is look through helping people retire, give them incentives to retire, and don't fill positions through attrition. No one's feelings are hurt. Everything goes good. Perfect way to do it. So those are my suggestions for saving money. Now, if you'll give me 15 more minutes?
No.
So you're not interested to hear about how to generate $30,000 dedicated directly to the IMEC with no cost to the city?
Yes, Mr. Lancy, but this public forum is limited to five minutes to state your issue. You're welcome. You're welcome to come back.
Yeah, I'm going to come back.
At the, it could be the home meeting. Get on the agenda to speak for a longer period of time. We'll certainly do that.
Mayor, there's no way we can put 15 minutes in here to generate $30,000 in 15 minutes I can go through this with you?
No, thank you.
Okay.
We'll give you another opportunity, Mr. Lancy, to speak.
All right.
The issues that you brought up before are already in the works and in administrative capacity. You're well aware of that. So we'll give you more opportunity to speak later on, and if you would please...
But the public is not aware of this, Mayor.
They will be. You'll have an opportunity to speak at the...
Well, they could be aware tonight. So...
Thank you, Mr. Lancy.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Move to item number five of the consent agenda. The following items will be acted like one motion unless a counselor or citizen of the City of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on April 23rd, 2024. Item 5.1, be the special meeting that was held on April 30th, 2024. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 24-009, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approve the transit merchant license for Dillon Horn DT Ventures LLC doing business as Grilled Cheese Galore. Item 5.4 is approve the exempt permit for the Laurentian Chamber of Commerce for the following: to conduct a raffle at the Virginia Golf Course on June 5th, 2024. And item 5.4B, to conduct a raffle at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center on October 4th, 2024. Item 5.5, approve the exempt permit for the Virginia Community Foundation to conduct a raffle in Bingo at the Virginia Elks Lodge on November 22nd, 2024. Item 5.6, approve the exempt permit for the Holy Spirit Church to conduct a raffle on July 5th, 2024, at the Holy Spirit Church. These are the consent agenda items that are before the council today, looking for council action. I'll move the consent agenda as presented. Counselor Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support?
What?
Support by Counselor Motley? Is there any further discussion? Counselor Beyondich?
Thank you. I would like to just pull 5.5 for a separate vote.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Or I can, if I can abstain from that one.
You can abstain from 5.5?
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, and a second, is that correct, to approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstention with item 5.5? Counselor Beyondich?
I will just abstain from that.
Abstain, yes, thank you. Okay. Motion passes. Consent agenda has been approved. Item six is appearances, which is scheduled appearances under item 6.1, Ms. Beth Pierce from the Iron Range Tourism Bureau, to give an update on the reasonable tourism around the area. Beth, welcome once again to the city council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I'm the Executive Director of the Iron Range Tourism Bureau. We are a nonprofit destination marketing organization. We're funded primarily by lodging taxes. Those come from 14 hotels and motels, seven campgrounds, and around a dozen or so participating short-term rentals. I'm just here today to talk about a few things I'm really excited about. I would invite you to go to our website, ironrange.org, and you can look on the About section, and it will tell you who's on my board. You can look at our 2023 annual report and learn about kind of how last year went for us a little bit more. And I do have two board, one board member here. Britt is on my board. Jim Hunt also serves on our board, representing Virginia. So thank you to both of them. Before I jump to the good stuff, just a little update. You all know that we had a pretty lousy winter. There was no snow available to speak of. Giants Ridge kind of kept us in the game with probably the best snow in the Midwest. They do a great job out there with grooming and snowmaking. They were able to have a couple of large high school events, including the Nordic Championships, and they had to do that on the hill because there was no cross-country skiing. So, we were down in January about 40%. We were down 25% in February. March actually came in better than we expected. That's the last month that I have numbers for. But we're really looking forward to a great summer. And so part of the reason for that is that the Masabi Trail, as many of you know, has been in construction for 25 years, very long time, forever, and they are nearing completion. So it's always been their plan that they would kind of hold back on marketing and promoting the trail until it was really complete. And so because it's so close, they have made significant investment in marketing, starting last fall. And their numbers on their website, their social media engagements, and the requests for the map have just blown up. So that's really exciting, really looking forward to a lot more people on the Masabi Trail this summer, and it's exciting. So the other thing is that I want you to know about, finally, we have what is going to be a large-scale ATV map for our region. It'll be Itasca to Lake County, up to kind of the Cook, Vermillion area, and then down to Independence area. So there have been some really key ATV trail connections that have been completed in the last year. And also, we have some good routes for, you know, county roads and forest roads to connect people so they don't have to trailer as much. So this is the first time that people are going to be able to look at our region and actually plan an ATV trip, and see mileage, and where to stay, and it's, I am very excited, because we've always done well with the ATV market, but we didn't have those key connections. So it's going to be a very cool thing, and I look forward to getting that out there. Trails are very important to tourism and to our, you know, our quality of life, and we're going to be hosting with the Masabi Trail, a Trails Summit at Iron Trail Motors Event Center in August. So you will all be invited. It's meant for land managers, club participants, and, you know, our city leaders, to talk about, you know, there's been millions invested in trails in this region. How can we capitalize on that? How can our communities all, you know, make the most out of the trails that are on the ground and that are ones that are still yet to come? And also, there's been some good research done at our mountain bike trails for users, kind of getting a view of who's using those trails and what they're contributing to the economy. And the same thing, there's an ongoing study for ATV in St. Louis County. So that's going to be some good data. We're looking forward to sharing with all of you, and more to come on that. And I also like to give you an update on the Mine Tour project. Speaking of projects that have gone on for a long time, that started, I believe it started during the pandemic, and it came out of Itasca County because those folks feel like they're really not marketing their reclining mining areas and historic mines, as well as they could be. And, but really, we all know that the mines are here. So St. Louis County is part of this. And it's, it was, it's a story map. So online story map using ArcGIS and Google Maps to kind of walk people through the area, starting in the Cayuna area, up through Grand Rapids, through Itasca County, across the Iron Range, the Masabi Iron Range, and up to Ely. There's even some information about the ore docks at Silver Bay and North Shore Mining. And it's, I've seen it. It's almost done. So it's in the proofing stages. Please watch on social media. You'll see when that is. Virginia has a nice video and some photography. I think Britt should have access to that, but I can send that out again if you, if you still need that. Visit Grand Rapids. We'll be taking the lead on doing some promotions around that, and we'll be, you know, following in with that as well. The next phase of that is the signage, and Virginia did contribute to that, to get some signage. I think I'm going to be kind of taking over the Phase Two of that. So more to come on that. But it's, it's pretty exciting, and it turned out really well. So, and I'm just going to give a quick plug for some of our programming. We are in our 13th year of the Spirit of Hospitality Awards. That's a great event that recognizes folks in hospitality. We have a Certified Tourism Ambassador class. We just had a class last week, and we're having another one on June 20th, and that's been very successful. I'm part of Hello Range, which is a resident recruitment and retention effort. It kind of came from us, and it's kind of shepherded it off to some other funding sources and other person working on that. But I was just at the Virginia Library. There was a welcoming gathering in there. So there was a nice handful of new residents that came to, just to meet other people and learn about the area. So, we're doing some good work. Looking forward to a great summer. I invite anyone to call, email, stop by if you want to talk tourism with me, but... email, stop by if you want to talk tourism with me, but does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Beth. Council Beyondich.
I did have a chance to see the videos from each little community for the Mine Tour. Fabulous. It is going to be wonderful. So thank you for all the work on that.
Thank you, Beth. Council Motley.
Beth, every time you come here, which has been a couple times since I've been on the council, I love hearing from you as an outdoor enthusiast and just hearing what's going on. I did have a question, and I apologize if I miss this. You said you have ATV maps available right now?
Almost.
Almost. And it'll be on the website when they do become available, because I will be very interested.
Yes, and we will have, Fisher's printing copies of them. So there could be some at City Hall if you have a place to have those here. And they'll be, they'll be everywhere, I hope. But there's, I know there's a big demand for those, so.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Motley. Thank you, Beth. Appreciate you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hey. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I just want to say, Mr. Lancy, there's no disrespect here to you about giving some additional ideas. I know you met with Brian Silver about this idea that you have moving forward, and so I would just simply ask, and Brian has made me aware of that as well, and the council, to come back to the next committee home meeting so we can have a bit, really, good discussion about how we can implement the idea that you have brought forth to us. And we appreciate that very much, Mr. Lancy.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and also, we have a meeting tomorrow at two forty-five, too, if you're available to attend, and you could discuss that at length with our Building and Grounds Committee as well. So we appreciate that, Mr. Lancy. So thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, move to item number seven, unfinished business. Item seven point one, the clinic lease. I know we're inching forward as the, as the time continues to tick by. Ever any other information to provide us tonight, Colleen?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, I talked to Brian just to get an update, and he and Frank Modic, who's the attorney for the clinic, had met. They had, the clinic had requested some additional information, and Brian is gathering that. There should be another meeting after that, and they are, they are inching their way closer and closer, Mayor. That's a fair way to describe it, so.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from the council with respect to this? Okay. The next item on the agenda, under item seven, under seven point two, the property located at four-ten Fifth Street South. And I'm going to ask Jenny, do we have any other information about the property, about the owner, and any progress that's been reported by your department?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Work has continued on the exterior of the structure, and that appears to be done within the realm of the permit that was issued. And interior work appears to be continuing to be worked on, but it's yet to be determined when that would be finished.
Okay, and then is there an inspection piece of that as well?
There was, I mean, there's been inspections, regular inspections. The interior, we're not there yet for that one, so. But the exterior has been inspected, yes.
Thank you, Jenny. Any questions, comments from the council regarding this progress on four-ten Fifth Street South? Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update, Jenny. I think that's informative. I think the expectation, though, was of the interior inspection, when the permit originally was issued, which landed us in the hole proceeding to go to court on that property. So the original, the original permit was issued with a six-month issuance, and the city was supposed to have been able to go in and inspect the work that was done, or that was stated to be done by our building code official. And then we never were able to get into that, back into the place to inspect it. So now, I'm sure the next-door neighbors would be asking, when will that, because they, we were, we told them the last time they were here that there would be basically like mile markers, or what did we call it, that there would be points given, and then inspections would be taking place, that they would be doing the work in the timeframe allotted. Because the permit, I think, only goes for six months, if I'm not correct. If I'm, I think I'm right on that one.
Thank you.
So I'd like to understand where we're at with that inspection inside, not outside.
And thank you. And we're getting closer to having another inspection, as you had indicated, Jenny, so please keep us apprised of that.
Was that inside or outside?
The outside has been inspected so far. So that's where we're at. That's kind of the milestone, if you would say, that we're at, is that the exterior has been completed, and so to be determined on the interior.
Okay, so the, but the original permit that was issued, they had a certain amount of time to finish the work on that permit.
And then.
And then we were to be inspecting that work.
And a new permit was issued based on some exterior compliance issues, and then there are interior things to be done included in that permit, is my understanding. And so we're at the point of having shored up the exterior portions, which were somewhat of a priority based on some pest infestations on that. So, and that's, so that's the point we're at currently.
Okay, so could we get some information to the people that inquire about this specific property of when the city can have, the expectation of the internal inspection would be taking place?
I think we can get that to the council.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Council Paulson. Okay, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number eight, discussion items. Item eight point one is approve the second reading of the draft ordinance amending Chapter Four, Section four point zero nine, regarding the monument marker, survey marker, and replacement. And I see that at the pre-construction meetings, that was a topic of, a point that Matt Reed was making about requiring the contrast to make sure that these things are, if they're located, they're properly replaced as well. But this is the second reading of the draft ordinance to, to require that.
I will move the second reading.
Council Johnson moves to approve the second reading, and is supported by Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Council Freedley?
I'll just make my comment. I fully understand and agree with what the city is seeking to accomplish by the imposition of this ordinance. However, I am opposed to it in that I don't think it's an enforcement issue as much as it is a communications issue. And for that reason only, I would be opposing this ordinance. But I fully understand and agree with what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, Council Freedley. It has been moved and supported to approve the second reading of the, of the ordinance. And once approved, then it goes into effect, was it fifteen days? Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further, after posted, fifteen days? If approved tonight, after it's posted, fifteen days from the posting, the ordinance takes effect. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nope.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
Huffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Freedley?
Nope.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes six-one. Thank you. Item eight point two, adopt the resolution to approve the MAP agreement, contract agreement. It's the Minnesota Association of Professional Employees. Moved to approve by Council Freedley. Is there support by Council Johnson? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight point three is adopt, excuse me, approve entering into a grant agreement with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for the Southern Drive Watershed Storm Water Resilient Project. Britt, any other information about this?
Yeah, we kind of discussed this today at Street and Alley as well. This is the area near the Southern Drive that goes out towards the water treatment plant, where all the water from the city collects. MPCA is giving out funding for us to have a planning study done with the professional service to determine what the kind of work that the public works needs to keep doing to make sure that outflow keeps going.
And the grant agreement is a grant that's awarded to us and the MPCA to get this done?
Nope, it's awarded to us by the MPCA.
Awarded us by MPCA. Thank you.
Correct.
All right. Council, moved to approve by Council Johnson and supported by?
Support. I do have a question.
Council Beyondich, further discussion? Council Beyondich.
Do, does this grant cover the cost of what will be, the work that will be done? Or that there's no additional cost to this?
The match for the city is ten thousand eight hundred dollars. However, we would use our funds that we already pay our city engineer for this work, would be our match to this.
Okay, thank you.
I really don't want to say in-kind, but it's in-kind services. We already have our city engineer that would do all the data preservation.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Britt. Thank you, all. Council Beyondich, it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight point four, adopt a resolution to enter into a lease agreement with Kurchowski Incorporated doing business as the Copper Nickel for the Golf Course Restaurant. Moved to approve by Council Paulson. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Council Motley.
I would just like to see damage deposit, if possible, added into the language when we chat with them. Is that possible, Colleen?
This is something you can, it's a negotiated point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Motley. It has been moved and supported with the contingent upon that additional language being negotiated for the lease regarding the damage deposit. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight point five, this is an item, approve the quote from Raditich Incorporated for the existing water main excavation to the Virginia Golf Course in the water pump area up by the seventh hole where the water tower is. They had a big leak over the wintertime, old and antiquated system from many, many years ago, finally broke. Need to have this. It's an emergency request, an amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety dollars to make this repair. And the question would be, is, the money comes from where? Sherry, would it come right out of the?
It'd be charged to the golf course, but initially, in the after effect, we would probably end up having to transfer from contingency if the golf course doesn't make enough money.
Okay, so if the golf course makes enough money at the end of the year, it'll cover that cost. If not, it may have to come out of contingency. And they need water to water the, they don't have any right now, so moving forward. So anyway, looking for council action or discussion or moving forward. Council Johnson?
I will move for more discussion.
Council Johnson moves to approve the quote for the repairs. Is there support? Support by Council Freedley. Further discussion? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. My question has to do with what else is, now we have a new piece of metal where the valve is. Do we know what it looks like on either side of the valve? And is this a little Band-Aid on a larger problem that we should be planning for in the future?
I think we could maybe ask Brian to come forward, but in discussions with the public, public works and public utilities and yourself, I think it was like three years ago, was it, that that entire whole seal and pump system was replaced after it was damaged. But this requires an excavation of the line that provides the water. I'm gonna, Brian Silver, our Park and Rec Director. Brian?
Thank you. I'm gonna speak, hopefully intelligently about this. I have not been down in the hole like Jim Ross that has been looking at it. What we are needing to replace is the old antiquated part, and the reason we're wanting to contract it out is because of what's on either side of it, so that we can update it all at this point to get it so that it is modern-day fittings and not something that is part of the original system in there. And that's why our staff is not the best staff to have do it at this point, and having a contractor come out to do it. In addition, they have equipment that is more appropriate for doing this job than what we have just down at the Public Works Yard.
I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
And what is the age of that?
I haven't, yeah, it's probably part of the original system that is in there.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Council Johnson?
I just appreciate that explanation, and I like that we're looking forward to fix it long-term instead of a Band-Aid. So thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Council Johnson. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. So just, and just to reiterate, I don't like hearing contingency fund on this, but I think Raditich does an amazing job, and the fabrication of a part, a component, that, like Council Johnson is stating, that we have them do it and install it, and we're trying to be more proactive. So it's unfortunate that we may have to go into our contingency fund for this. But if we don't do it, it could pose a larger expense later down the road. So I'm comfortable doing this, and I know Raditich does an amazing job. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Paulson. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, move to item nine, committee reports. The committee, the home meeting that was held on May seventh, two thousand twenty-four. We'll turn this part of our meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennet. Britt?
Thank you. At the committee, the home meeting on Tuesday, May seventh, Deputy Chief Nicola presented a city, citizen lifesaving award to Megan Moberg from our CCR team for an incident she assisted with on the Ravina Bridge. Officer John Swenson also commented on the incident and thanked Moberg for her efforts. Kimberly Thielen Kramer, Minnesota Department of Agriculture, was present to discuss the information regarding the spongy moth management and the need for aerial spraying in our area. She did a very nice presentation that explained this, the national program where eleven states formed together to team up against the spongy moth, which was formerly called the gypsy moth. The program's been in existence for over twenty years. They held a public hearing. They're sending out flyers to the residents that'll be affected, and they were seeking support from the city to approve a letter, sending a letter of awareness of the proposed aerial spraying for the spongy moth in and around Virginia as required for federal regulations. That was the motion.
We'll move that we write a letter of awareness for the proposed spraying of the spongy moth around the city of Virginia.
A motion by Council Johnson to send a letter of acknowledgement of the spraying system. Is there support?
Right.
By Council Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Matt Reed, our engineer of record, was present to discuss the request for additional professional services for the storm sewer rehabilitation phase one in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred. He did state bids would be open this, this week, it actually was today. It was moved and supported to approve the updated costs to the professional services agreement for the storm sewer rehabilitation phase one project in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred dollars.
So moved. Moved to approve by Council Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Freedley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Matt Reed went on to explain that the SEH, Jessica from SEH, was working with Paul Christensen from People Services on a full-scale trial of Aqua Hawk one-five-one-seventy-seven, which is a polyaluminum chloride blend for phosphorus removal at the wastewater treatment facility. We had been using the chemical RE three hundred, but it is becoming very costly to transport it here. More than anything, the trial of the new material was successful, maintaining affluent phosphorus levels below the limit of zero point zero seven milligrams per liter. Thus, they came, they asked for a professional services agreement with SEH for the chemical feed improvement evaluation in the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred dollars, so that they can come up with a recommendation of the measures we would need to take to keep the chemical, the new chemical from freezing in our existing buildings.
Thank you. Any council action?
I will move that we award the professional service agreement for sixteen-six.
Council Johnson moves to approve the professional services agreement. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Motley. Further discussion? This is gonna work toward us reducing significantly the cost associated with the chemicals at the wastewater treatment plant moving forward. So it would be cost savings moving forward based upon that. Lots of discussion at the committee home meeting with respect to that. Council Johnson? Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, and just for clarification, we're not looking to heat this, that was one of my clarifying points, was we're looking to heat this particular building to 20 above zero because this freezes at three instead of negative three instead of negative 32. And I also had asked that maybe they look into solar panels or something that could even offset that cost for moving forward, so this is a long-term solution that's gonna save the money, the city a lot of money as we move forward to this different technology. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson, it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, I'm sorry, Councilor Freely.
So does this cost that we're incurring for this evaluation, does that conclude then the necessary construction and insulation, or is that above and beyond, this is just the evaluation of that? Or is this all in one package? That's what I don't understand, because I remember a $19,000 figure originally.
It's just the evaluation piece.
Just the evaluation. So there will be construction of some sort, insulation of some sort, and again, it won't be heated to a significant degree, but enough so that it won't freeze. So there will be additional costs.
There will.
We should realize that from the savings from the change to this particular product that we're using. All right, thank you.
And the initial investment, based upon the small footage, that square footage that has to be done to accommodate heating that particular area, is the benefit supposedly as indicated us over the long haul, significant amount of savings moving forward with what they consider being initial investment that will save us lots more money in the future. So thank you for that clarification, Councilor Freely. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Britt?
It was moved and supported to approve the agreement for the use of the city tennis facilities with Rock Ridge, and on your desk was the updated, both the red line copy or blue line copy and the updated version.
Thank you.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Councilor Freely, been quickly supported by Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those, I'm sorry, Councilor Freely? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you.
It was moved and supported to approve the county classification of conservation for the parcels 090018001566, 0159001601, and 01631.
And for the public clarification, what are these properties?
These are all located in Midway where the land department currently sits.
Okay, and we're looking to approve the county classification, and the classification is what?
Conservation.
Conservation, thank you. So moved. Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to purchase the tax forfeit property at 1173rd Street North within the City of Virginia, as that would, it lies next to two vacant lots that we also own on 3rd Street North, and now with those three, we would be able to build a house there or sell it for a house lot.
Okay, thank you. So moved. Moved by Councilor Motley, supported by Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Councilor Motley.
And then just for the public clarification, what is that gonna cost the city, Britt?
We hope that, we haven't had a county able to give us a final answer yet, but we're hoping about $500 is what we're hoping.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the request to close Chestnut Street from 510 Chestnut Street to the end of Fifth Avenue for a Juneteenth celebration on Wednesday, June 19. They originally asked for the times of 3:00 to 9:00 p.m., and they sent an email shortly after the meeting asking if they could change the times to 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. instead.
Moved by Councilor Biondich, supported by?
Support.
Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the request from Rev. Virginia for the Food Truck Festival on September 21, 2024.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Motley, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Johnson, further discussion? Getting more and more of these food trucks all around town, so exciting, yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to purchase the 2024 Ford Transit van from Lundgren's in the amount of $64,277.47, the funding from the 2023 equipment bond.
So moved. Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
I'll support for further discussion.
By Councilor Freely for further discussion? Further discussion, Councilor Freely, and then over to Councilor Paulson, and then maybe to go again to Councilor Johnson. Councilor Freely.
From my understanding, that this is the van that's typically used by Kurt?
It's similar to the van that looks like Kurt's. It's a panel van, it's not a passenger van.
But it's not something that would be used by him?
It'd be used by the other maintenance person we have. Kurt's position is maintenance and repair. We have one other maintenance and repair person in the city that doesn't have a vehicle right now.
Well, this will be specific to the event center, then?
For Parks and Recreation, not just the event center.
Primarily Wes?
All park buildings.
Wes would be driving that primarily?
Wes is the current person in that position, but it's all park buildings, including tennis building, golf course, everything at the Alcott Park, the Klein Coopletti, and the Iron Trail Motors.
And are there not other vehicles in the fleet that would be accommodating to the needs of Wes to be able to acquire the types of things he needs to bring back to make repairs at the event center?
The advantage of having the vehicle like Kurt has is that you can leave all your equipment in there. He's got, it's because it's got a panel van with no windows on the side, you can go in and there's racks of tools.
So this won't be specific to the event center, it'll be for other buildings and grounds needs as well?
For the park system, yes.
And kinda complementing what Kurt's doing as well?
Kurt works on City Hall, Library, Senior Center, Dean Center, and Progress Park Buildings.
Then my question would be is that, did we put out bids that could have been, could have been answered by other, such as Iron Trail Motors or others? Were they in the mix?
Yes, I'm gonna have Brian Silver come up and answer that. Brian Silver, Park and Recreation Director.
Brian, if you could come forward, there was a question which Linty had as well, how that process went and how we arrived at this recommendation for Lundgren Motors. Brian?
For our vehicles, we reached out to all of our local dealerships, giving them the specs of what we were looking for. That is the low bid, yes.
And so the sharing of a vehicle between Wes and Kurt is not an option?
No.
It's become apparent that there's two necessary vehicles to accommodate the needs for both Park and Rec as well as Building and Ground.
Prime example, Wes has been, for the past couple of weeks, Wes has been spending a lot of time up at the Golf Course Restaurant, getting it ready for the Copper Nickel to open.
What have you been using in the interim, then, I guess? What would be?
He's just been taking a pickup truck. So he grabs the tools he thinks he's going to need for the job that he's going to, goes to the site, starts working on the job. If he doesn't have the tool, then he has to go back and get another tool. So there is efficiency with having all of your tools that are traveling with you, as opposed to having your tools in the building and grabbing what you believe you're gonna need for the job and then discovering that you need something else.
And ultimately, this was a budgeted item for Park and Rec, then?
Yes, it was in the bond from, that was approved last year.
Equipment bond.
And that's been approved?
Yes. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So my original understanding, when I pulled up the capital equipment bond list, was that it was a truck with a plow that we had originally, were originally allocating dollars to, is that correct?
There is a truck with a plow we still need to purchase.
But that was the original, at our last meeting of the, when you presented this, you had stated verbatim at the Committee of the Hall that this was to replace the truck with the plow.
Because we did have one that got damaged, that insurance ended up paying for.
So we're replacing a?
Vehicle with the vehicle, yes.
Yes, but what is on the capital equipment bond list was a truck with a plow? For which department was that?
Park.
Under the Park Department? And why do we not need a truck with a plow now?
Added us your insurance claim that ended up paying for our new truck.
Okay, so we had an insurance claim that paid for damage to an existing truck with a plow?
There's still one more truck to purchase on the equipment bond.
Right, I saw that. I understand that. When we enter into an equipment bond, the items, so we are actually swapping out an item or a different item?
Because originally, we went to the equipment bond, we tried to find a van, nobody was making them that year.
Okay, so if this van at $64,277, that van could be replaced with a different item or a different piece of equipment that the city needs?
Vehicle.
Would a, would pothole filler, since our pothole filler is not currently working or correctly working, be?
It's not the brand new one, actually.
And according to what we had heard from Jim Rossford, is that it wasn't heating up properly to put the fill down on the potholes, which are, what our taxpayers are concerned mostly about is potholes and streets. So would that be something that we could have a discussion upon? Because I don't think in expenditure of $64,000 for a secondary van, that we can put tools in a truck, and we have been currently utilizing that system for a while, to expend $64,000 to have tools in an enclosed van is a very necessary use of taxpayer dollars. And if we could upgrade our pothole filler or any equipment that goes along with that, I think that would be a much smarter choice of using $64,000 from the capital equipment bond. So I don't know if it's, the voting is five to two to spend money on this item, or if I would table this, if I would table it to a different Committee of the Hall, so we can have a further discussion at that point in time, but at this point, I would say no to this expenditure. So I don't know if there's any other conversation, but either I will be voting no, or I will vote to table to the next Committee of the Hall. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that's your right to do so if you choose to table, you may make that motion to do so at any time during this conversation. Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the part that's most important to me is the efficiencies, the amount of time one of our employees needs to figure out what they need, they forgot a tool, they go back, back and forth. The other thing that I've learned as I've been shadowing folks and listening, is that right now, or prior to having the maintenance person in Parks and Rec, Kurt was the sole maintenance person and struggled to take time off and struggled to find balance because he was almost literally on call. And so creating a redundancy and a second person to work on other things is going to create efficiencies in the practicality of working on two projects at once. The practicality of knowing that if one of the employees needs to be pulled to the other one to do some help, that's important. I think, I see too many times we get hung up on which department is it and what is their job, and overall, the city should be working together as much as possible on jobs and teamwork. It's planned, we talked about it, it's, it's not a luxury, I need to correct you on that, Mr. Linty, it is not a luxury by any means. Having the tools you need when you need them on a taxpayer dollar, I think is very important. The money that, he's not running from the golf course to the ITMEC, and then to the golf course and the ITMEC three times because he needs drills or whatever, that's just an efficiency that I think is well needed. I know that our staff, especially our leadership staff, are very aware of the need to watch budgets, and if the conglomeration of the staff have agreed that this is what we need right now, I need to trust them and I will support them in purchasing this vehicle. It sounds like we follow the protocols, we need to. I'm, I will only speak for myself, I will not speak for other people, that I think this is one of the ways that we help get things done more efficiently in the city and in a better timeframe, so I will be supporting this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson, Councilor Paulson. Councilor Motley?
Was this a request from the employee doing the job to make his job easier, Brian?
Brian Silver, our Park and Rec Director, Brian, could you answer that question for Councilor Motley, please?
The current employee doing the job, no, it was not their request. The permanent employee, the current, the current employee is in a temporary position. The permanent employee was the one who had requested and laid out why it was important for the maintenance position to have a vehicle so that could provide the maintenance to all of the various Parks and Recreation buildings.
Okay, and I understand Parks and Rec is obviously the largest in the city. When Wes takes a truck, per se, to wherever he's going, are we down a truck where somebody can't go anywhere because we don't have another vehicle available?
No, we have enough vehicles that he's able to take a vehicle. He's able to take one of the vehicles from the event center, and there's still another one there.
Has Wes expressed extreme frustration in his inability to haul tools back and forth in one load versus multiple?
I wouldn't say extreme frustration, he has expressed frustration that he has to spend time at the beginning of his day loading everything into the vehicle, taking it to the work site, and then at the end of the day, bringing it back and unloading and putting things away. So there is additional time that is spent throughout the day, getting tools out, putting tools away.
So going forward, if we were to approve this van, is he leaving these tools in this vehicle at all times?
Inside the locked vehicle, yes.
Okay, and to segue, thanks, Brian, about Councilor Paulson with the potholes, Britt, can you help me with the potholes? Because we were at the street alley this morning, I thought our pothole machine was, however they describe it, was working and almost could be out daily.
Yeah, the staff has been out doing potholes, so if you have questions or comments, we will get out there and get it done. The newer machine that we bought doesn't heat up as high as the old machine used to. The old machine used to heat up a lot hotter, so when it's kind of chilly around, it doesn't heat up as hot as it used to, so that's the problem we're having. It's been a nice winter and it's been a nice spring so far, so it's been working okay at the moment, but.
And what happens if we don't approve? What are the options if this truck doesn't get, or this van doesn't get approved? Where does the money go?
Like I mentioned, it has to, we can't get any interest on it, we can't use it for anything but a vehicle, it's gotta be a vehicle, that portion of it. And then if we don't use it, we could use it to decrease the debt levy of this specific bond.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. As we, as we go forward with our discussions with reorganization of all departments within the city, and if there were to be some reduction of staff, would that free up current vehicles that the city currently owns? Whether that's a van or a truck or a car?
Brian's saying yes.
Okay, so at this point, I just think that that is, that's an expenditure that we're prematurely agreeing to, and I actually would like to table this for further discussion to the Committee of, the next Committee of the Hall meeting.
Is that your motion?
And I'll make a motion to table to the next Committee of the Hall meeting.
We can override the motion with a tabling motion, correct? Yes, so there's a motion on the floor in a second to approve. So now we have a motion on the floor by Councilor Paulson to table this for further discussion, is there support for the tabling motion?
I support for discussion, or?
No discussion on the tabling motion. So it's moved by Councilor Paulson to table?
Until the next Committee of the Hall?
Until the next Committee of the Hall meeting. No further discussion at this Council meeting, if there's a second for the tabling motion. You could still discuss it at a Committee of the Hall meeting or some other meeting moving forward. It doesn't negate the opportunity to revisit and approve it at some later time, just to table it at this meeting in order to gather some additional information or further discussion about the equipment bond and how we move forward with other reorganization projects. I think that was Councilor Paulson's. I think that was Counselor Paulson's issue. So it was ta, it, there's a motion to table. Is there support?
I'll support that. Can I make a suggestion in regard to that?
No, for, once it's seconded, no, no discussion at all.
Well, the discussion will be at another time.
Yeah, probably next committee of the whole meeting or some, so, until some additional information forthcoming, so we can vet this out a little bit more.
Next Tuesday?
Could be next Tuesday, yes.
Okay, support.
Thank you. Moved and supported? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, uh, roll call, please, Pam.
Coffee?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Friedle?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Darren Sally?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes to table six-one, thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item nine-point-one, nine-point-one J, it was moved and supported to approve the refund of the pro-aided liquor license fee for twenty-twenty-four to Paul Neary, Pauli's LLC, doing business as Pauli G's.
Move to approve?
Uh, moved by Counselor Paulson to approve the refund. Is there support? By Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? The statute allows for a refund, uh, under the law based upon the closing of an establishment, and so it had mo, had moved in support to do so, law allows to do so. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution authorizing a sale of surplus equipment?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? By Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
There's no further action, item is at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Moved to item ten, commission liaison reports. Is there any, uh, counselor that'd like to give a commission liaison report this evening? I just wanna, uh, let you know that in, in the office and in your mailbox will be a brochure that was established in two thousand and eighteen regarding the Department of Public Utilities and the, the plan that they had, the map moving forward. It included, uh, some information regarding the steam conversion as well, uh, uh, which is, which is requested to be ongoing now, and I'll make sure each one of you has a copy of that in your box for reference purposes. Okay, moved to item number eleven on the, uh, council agenda, department head reports. We'll start from left to right. Uh, any other department head reports to disseminate today, Britt?
I can think of, thank you.
Okay, thank you. A clean from legal, do we have any other information?
Nothing else, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Pam, anything moving forward?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna let the public know that on next Tuesday, May twenty-first, filings will open for City Council, and there are three vacancies coming up this year.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Uh, Sherry, any, uh, any, uh, windfalls coming to us in front of time, too?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm looking forward to some.
Okay, Jenny? Nothing from, uh, uh, nothing, okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, council reports. Any council have a report they'd like to give this evening? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I just wanted to bring that up again. As everybody knows, it's one of the things I'm most passionate about. Um, mental health has a tendency that everything's fine until it isn't. Um, and sometimes it takes a while for an individual to realize that things aren't going well. For me personally, um, last year, at the beginning of the year was really stressful. Um, my son had moved away, one of my foster sons left quite suddenly, um, and it took me several months before my daughter came to me and said, Daddy, who am I gonna play with this summer? And I had realized that we had been grieving as a family independently for four or five months. And then I started to take a look back, a conscious look back at, at my attitude, how I had been behaving, how I had been processing things, and realized that I was probably in a pretty significant depression. Um, and being able to where, be aware of that, even though one of my things is to be aware of that, um, was a really eye-opening for me. Um, that happened again, not to quite that extent this year, between the budget process and the strike, and really having to process and take on, for myself, the responsibility of everything that I was dealing with, and then coming to realize that I'm not alone in this process. Um, I have great support system, I have great coworkers, um, we have an employee assistance program through the city. I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, how important that free service is to all of our employees, city councilors, the mayor, um, part-time, um, it's there for us, and to utilize that is one of the things that we can do as individuals. And mental health is more than being depressed. Mental health is more than having negative thoughts. Mental health is also about being positive and looking forward and being aware of your surroundings. Every single one of us has mental health, just like we have physical health. And the correlation between mental health and physical health is pretty significant. A person's physical health can dwindle and their mental health can follow, or vice versa. The stress of the strike, for example, is one of those things that as we're going through it, we're all on heightened awareness, whatever side we were on, whatever position we were taking. And once all of that immediate stress went away, our bodies start, and our minds start trying to figure out what's next. Um, and, and just want our employees, our citizens, everybody to know that you don't have to do that stuff alone, there is always some sort of support out there. Um, I'm currently on the National, National Institutes of Health government website. Um, I just sent a simple Google of Mental Health Awareness twenty-twenty-four, um, and the number of free, um, free resources out here, i- it's amazing, and that's just this single website. So I, I just really want folks to, in this room, watching people at home, to know that your mental health is as important, and in my world is more important than physical health. Because if you're not mentally healthy, how are you taking care of your kids? How are you taking care of your spouse? How are you taking care of your nieces, nephews, your family members? How are you doing the best for your community, whatever that community is? So, I really encourage folks that if you think anything's off, go with it. Look it up, lot of stuff, there, there, the sunlight, seasonal defect, uh, affective disorder is a real thing in northern Minnesota. Um, it's very treatable. Um, I just can't say enough how important it is from, from the preschoolers I sub with to my grandparents and, and their friends. Mental health is a lifelong awareness, and the better we do it taking care of ourselves and our mental health, the better our community will be, the better our relationships will be. So, um, I appreciate everybody listening to me on this. It's, to me, it's one of the most important things that we can take care of in our lives. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Okay, uh, anyone else? Uh, whoa, whoa, oh, you're back. Come on up. Jody from, uh, the library, Jody Grabenowski, our library director, Jody, for a department head report, and then we'll go over to Counselor Friedle, and then I have a couple announcements as well. Jody, welcome.
So, thank you. Um, yeah, so the library, you know, May has been a pretty busy month. Um, today, we had a legacy tour with, um, Bart Barn Quilts and how to look at them throughout the state of Minnesota, and then we had an Iron Ranger, Welcome to the Iron Ranger event tonight at the library that we partner with. But, this week, on Thursday, Linda Regard, Legard Grover, she's an author, poet, and an amazing storyteller, and she's at the library at one o'clock, please come join us. And then, for the littles on Friday, we have act of play starting at ten-thirty, and that'll be in the event room. And then, uh, on Monday, we have our after-hours event, so we have the Legacy Tour of Minnesota Authors, there are three mystery authors. It starts at six o'clock. Yes, the library's closed that day, but we will open the doors at five-thirty, please join us. And then, a week from today, the Friends of the Library have their annual meeting at the Iron Trail Event Center, so if you are, um, wanna come join us, the library's selling the tickets, it's, um, they're twenty dollars, they have really good hors d'oeuvres, and you can come hear about what everything the library did in the last year. So that is all I have for you. If you have any questions, check our website, give us a call at two-one-eight, seven-four-eight, seven-five-two-five.
One more ti, one more time on the announcement for the annual meeting?
The annual meeting for the Friends of the Library is next Tuesday, the twenty-first. It starts, um, you can start eating around five-thirty, the program itself will start at six-thirty, and so you'll learn about all the programs that the Friends have been involved with this year, um, library statistics, kind of what we're doing, and then some plans for twenty-four. So that is at the Iron Trail Event Center at five-thirty, and it should be done around seven.
Thank you very much, Jody. Appreciate it very much. Counselor Johnson, then we'll go over to Counselor Friedle.
I think, I just wanna say, Jody, that the summer flyer came home with my fourth grader, and that has been the topic of discussions, and we're already planning on how to do the bingo, so the, the summer program may not have started officially yet, but it's out there, so if you don't have it, go get it.
Um, I visited schools yesterday. I saw third, fourth, fifth and sixth grade, so I saw over four hundred students, so yes. Um, but summer reading doesn't officially start till June first, and what I told them, come to the library, they can see the creepy crawlies. I don't know which ones we're gonna have yet because we don't know, um, like, if the snake is gonna be molting, that snake probably won't come to the library. We will have a warning sign, so if you are not into creepy crawlies, we will give you a heads up, just don't go to the event room, just come upstairs, get your free book. So the kickoff is June first. Um, yes, those of you that have young children, they will be seeing me next week, a couple different times, so we will get, basically K through six will all come home with their summer reading packets.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody. Uh, do we have a street and alley report there, uh, Counselor Friedle or some other item?
I just put all that away, but we can bring that up.
Let's, let's go with the, you guys will go with the other one.
I'm sorry about that.
We're good.
Um, I just wanna acknowledge Mr. Riley Bixby and his wife and his beautiful children and family, and commend them as parents in this community of bringing their family here for civic education here in the chamber, so thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for coming. Um, couple items, uh, we did have a street and alley committee meeting today, uh, which comprised of the chairperson, which is, uh, Counselor Friedle, and then, uh, Counselor Motley and I are serve on that committee. There's a, the street and alley programs, uh, we, we have a big street program, uh, moving forward. We, uh, discussed some additional, uh, opportunities and directed staff to look at other, uh, streets for twenty-seven and twenty-eight, but this year's construction season is gonna be very busy. You can all already see now the significant impact on the traffic on Thirteenth Street, uh, all the way, uh, down from the, from Twelfth Avenue all the way down by the Range Middle Hill. There's other projects moving forward, Sixth Avenue from, uh, the Ninth Avenue, which is the Old North Star Drug, all the way up to Eleventh Street, and then from Eleventh Street up to Thirteenth Street, so that project is be done, and there are many other projects, streets work there can be done. We just ask for your patience as we move forward and try to repair these streets, they're rather significant repairs, a complete reconstruction in some regard, so please, uh, keep apprised of that. If you have any questions or comments, you can certainly give a call to our Park and Rec, uh, uh, I'm excuse me, our, uh, Public Works Department at two-one-eight, seven-four-eight, seven-five-one-five, that's two-one-eight, seven-four-eight, seven-five-one-five. You have any questions, concerns, comments, or suggestions moving forward, we've had a few already, and our, our engineer of record, S E H, Matt Reed, and our Public Works Director, Jim Roswell, have answered those questions and have taken action to try to make some adjustments there. So if you have any concerns, please do not hesitate to call them. So thank you for that. Uh, in addition to that, I wanna make one more plug for, uh, uh, June sixth of two thousand and twenty-four at the Virginia Oaks Lodge, uh, there's gonna be a, uh, a ceremony to honor and remember, uh, the, uh, D-Day, the Invasion of Normandy, which took place on June sixth, nineteen forty-four. This is the eightieth anniversary of such a thing, and we're gonna be, uh, having a little presentation, uh, we, Congressman Staubert is gonna be there, uh, we have, uh, some, uh, some patriotic music, uh, and we're gonna, uh, just to give two examples of two war, we're two veterans that went through the war and, and how that transpired, and we have, uh, a gentleman who, uh, named Lori Lockso, who's gonna be coming in, and as he was going through high school, he's gonna talk about, you know, how, uh, how things went in high school and how patriotic was back in the day, but we're gonna, uh, we're gonna honor, uh, uh, two people, uh, in that regard, and, and there'll be a special presentation moving forward. So, if you wanna come, you're welcome to come, it doesn't cost a thing, it's a free service, the honor guard will be coming in, and so with just a, a short presentation, it's, uh, five to seven, five to five-thirty, a little, some refreshments in, and some little sandwiches and some desserts and some coffee and juice. And then we'll start the program at five-thirty, it'll be done by seven. So, uh, anybody's interested in that, let us know. It is the eightieth anniversary of D-Day, or the Invasion of Normandy. It's the one celebration where there is an official United States cemetery, you know, on foreign soil, and that's at the beaches of Normandy, France, and that's where every single year, country of France, has a big celebration and recognizes the Normandy invasion, what's a freedom of the French, of France. So, uh, we're gonna do that here, be it on Veterans Day, World War II days, all, you know, but nobody really has ever honored that, and this is the eightieth anniversary. So, it'll be live streamed if you can't make it, it'll be on YouTube, wherever our cable people there are live streaming it as well, so just to let you know that's going on, so. Thank you, everybody, for, uh, coming. Thank you, Miss, Miss the Bixby family for coming in and coming to the council meeting this evening.